And sent to all members of the Board of Education and to the Bergen Record in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, 1975. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Okay? We are gonna start off with the student representative reports. Mic drop. Mic just give me. Thank you. Test. Okay. Is it? Okay. Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. I'm starting off with Washington School. October was a very busy month. They had their fire truck visit and their field trip to Seacor Farms. On November 26th, they're looking forward to their Thanksgiving feast. And also, the new elevator is complete and they're working on putting the finishing touches on it and the new classroom.
Franklin School. The kindergarten classes enjoyed a community field trip to the library, post office, police station, and municipal building. The students enjoyed meeting the community helpers and learning more about what they do. The Saddle Brook Fire Department visited for Fire Prevention Week. They worked closely with them to ensure our, their fire drill procedures are safe and effective. They celebrated Week of Respect and Red Ribbon Week, emphasizing kindness, empathy, and healthy lifestyle choices. They also honored their first Falcons of the Month. This award is presented to students who demonstrate the school vision, traits of responsibility, kindness, integrity, and respect and/or have achieved academic success or growth.
October was a very busy month for Smith School as they focused on fire prevention, the Week of Respect, Red Ribbon Week, and Halloween. Smith had a visit from Detective Buchak and Detective Parisi as they reviewed online safety in 5th grade, and their kindergarteners visited important spots throughout the community. As Smith heads into November, they are focusing on gratitude as a school community. Smith's PR club has been working on interviewing new staff members and they are working hard to share why attendance matters on Smith School Instagram feed. Happy World Kindness Day, everyone.
For Long School, October was a month filled with several important school-wide initiatives, including Week of Respect, Fire Prevention Week, and Red Ribbon Week. On Monday, Long School paid a memorable tribute to Veterans Day with our, with their Heroes for Heroes event. They invited family members of students who are veterans to attend this event, which included an outdoor ceremony by the flagpole, featuring a school-wide Pledge of Allegiance and Star Spangled Banner, followed by a musical, musical performance from their ORFF group. Their 6th grade Long Leaders guided classroom visits and a special luncheon of Heroes for Our Heroes was generously provided and organized by their PTO. On Wednesday, they celebrated World Kindness Day, encouraging students to embody "I" and "kind" and inspire acts of kindness throughout their community.
All right, on to the high school. The high school PSAT day for 10th and 11th graders was on October 23rd. Both seniors and freshmen participated in a delayed opening schedule while the other students tested. The senior breakfast on the 25th of October went successfully. Students smiled brightly for yearbook pictures and enjoyed a breakfast accompanied by their friends. And seniors also were able to fill a time capsule with images and letters for their future selves. Junior Honor Society, National Honor Society, and Service Learning Club, amongst many others, participated in a trunk-or-treat to give local kids a positive and interactive Halloween experience whilst continuing to foster a healthy environment for the community. The club and activity fair on Halloween had a huge turnout with the introduction of new and upcoming clubs whilst successfully maintaining the liveliness of the current ones. On our week off for both Election Day and teachers' conventions gave students to, gave the second market period a fresh start and students time to prep for the Ramapo Instant Decision Day. Speaking of Ramapo Instant Decision Day, it came recently on November 12th and all 30 students who participated were accepted into Ramapo College.
All right, on to the middle school. The middle school has been following the Month of Respect. The faculty, staff, and students all wore orange on October 16th for national blink prevention. On October 30th, the faculty, staff, and students all wore red for drug abuse prevention. React made cards and wrote cheerful notes that were included in Veterans Day care packages and as, and also React and the 7th grade seminar teacher sponsored a variety of lessons and activities during Red Ribbon, Ribbon Week that encouraged students to maintain healthy lifestyles. On October 23rd, they had Lieutenant Mark Buchak from the Saddle Brook Police Department speak with their 7th and 8th graders about internet, internet safety. The students were engaged and asked a lot of questions. Thank you to our Saddle Brook Police Department. Middle School's been very, very busy as on Halloween, they had a bias crime presentation given by the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office. Their goal was to educate students on the negative bias and harsh consequences it may cause them in their communities. It was a very informative presentation.
Okay. And lastly, there's lots to congratulate with athletics. Um, the first is the league tennis players. Second team, Gianna Forian, an honorable mention to Caitlin Mendez. Girls soccer team was, first players are Antonio, Antonio Chitino, Sophia Sarah, Arlene Zia, Blake Galineas, and Nina Borelli. Second team players are Leana Nikokaj, Mia Zia, Maggie Fanning, and Clara Sadi. Honorable mention to Manbiere Kaur. Congratulations to goalie Clara Sadi who scored 100. And also a congratulations to Coach Deandro Donato on being selected as the NJIC Liberty Division Coach of the Year. And a congratulations to our SBHS Girls Soccer Team on winning the Liberty Division Championship Zero in League Play. Cross-country first team, all-league girls are Oli Pavlatsky. Second team, Rea Thomas, Reyna Rodriguez, and Kaliana Banock. Honorable mention to Adriana Polanco. First team cross-country boys is my partner Devon Thomas. Second team Nicholas Pinto. Honorable mention of Brian Traverso. And lastly, first team all-league boys soccer, Daniel Damoski, Damian Taraska, and Gabe Seraphin. Second team, Martin Topinski and Damian Stoltis. Honorable mention to Sam Roldan. Congratulations to our boys soccer team on a great year. They finished with 13 regular season wins, which is the most in the school's history, and a huge shout out to the Saddle Brook High School head coach Chris Alfieri on recording his 100th career win as a head coach. Thank you. Thank you so much for the wonderful report. Okay, Ken, we're gonna move on to the superintendent's report. Mrs. Vialletti?
Yes. Thank you. Yes. Good job. Okay, so that, I know that we have some of our exemplary Falcons here with their families. So we are going to do my report, the business administrator report, then we will do the presentation for our students who are present, and after that, we'll take a short minute break before we proceed with the remainder of the meeting, so just so everyone knows the schedule. For superintendent updates, I just want to reiterate that Long School, they did a Hero for, Heroes for Heroes for Veterans Day, and it really, they did, it was their first time doing it. They collaborated with the PTO. PTO hosted a beautiful luncheon of heroes for our heroes. And it turned out to be a beautiful day and the entire school gathered outside on the front lawn. They said the Pledge of Allegiance and the Star Spangled Banner. Then they went and had a musical production. And then the Long Leaders, which are some of our students there at Long Memorial, they actually hosted the veterans and took them to different classrooms so that way they can speak to our students. And then after that, they had the luncheon. So I just wanted to congratulate Long Memorial School because it was definitely a very positive event in our district and involved our community members as well, which was really great. I also wanted to share that we are offering, as a district, once again, youth mental health first aid training for our parents in our community. And we, we proud to say we received 24 responses. So we do have 24 of our families that are participating in youth mental health first aid training. It's going to take place Wednesday, December 11th. And information was sent out to all of those 21st families that responded, and they do half of the training at home and then half is in person on December 11th. I also wanna share that our parent partnership night, our first one for this school year is next Wednesday, November 20th. It's going to be from 7 o'clock to 9 o'clock PM here at the middle school, high school. If you recall, we are aiming to have three parent partnership nights a year, and the purpose of these is so that we're not asking our families to come out sporadically throughout the school year. So we have one in the fall, one in the winter, one in the spring. And that way, we can really just share with our families what's happening in our schools. So for this one next week, we are going to have a session on AI for Parents, Artificial Intelligence, Amplifying Dibbles, which is our K-3 ELA program. There'll be a session on that, on middle school survival. For our middle school parents, there'll also be a session on Intro to High School to kinda let, um, inform our middle school parents everything our high school has to offer. There'll be a FAFSA presentation, Basic Skills and Title, Money Presentation, Common School, Common Cool School Presentation, which is on de-stressing techniques for our parents to support their children at their house. Alphabet is providing free childcare. You do have to register in advance. I sent out that link today. The SBEA will be present with some giveaways. I believe they have tote bags and Rubik's cubes is what I, I hear. Our ESS that we use for substitutes, they're also going to be present to recruit any of our residents that wish to join their program and substitute, not only in our district, but in other towns as well that use ESS. As a reminder, Wednesday, November 27th is a single-session day, and then we're closed that Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday. And also, December 9th through 12th is K-6 Parent Teacher Conferences. So a reminder, those are single-session days for K-6 buildings only, and those signups for our families are going to be going out shortly. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much. All right, let's have the business administrators' report. Mr. Carrati?
Okay, quick update on a few items. The referendum is, all the projects are going well. Some of the items that we're working on, as the students reported before, Washington School elevator is pretty much in. They're doing some finishing touches with it, and it should get inspected and up and running hopefully by the end of the month. At this building, middle school, high school, there's gonna be a window replacement project to be started towards the end of December. During the week off, roof replacements continued and they got a big chunk of a couple of buildings done. We're gonna be bidding for Washington ceiling lights on the first and second floor in a couple of classrooms in December. We're also gonna bid for Washington windows to start replacing them. Coolidge School, which will be the future board offices, is currently underway and moving along quite well. Was there today and both floors are sheetrocked and the drop ceilings are being put in and things are moving. The elevator there projected to be in like February, March, so our move-in would be sometime in the spring, summer. Phase two of the front of the high, middle school, high school will be done this upcoming summer and happy to report that the Artificial Turf Field Project began on Monday, November 11th, and should take a couple months and be rolling before the spring season. Other grants for projects, we, I've stated before here, the School Development Authority, you know, we got approved for some grants for boilers and HVAC work. We're bidding for the boilers now. There was 10 of them, two of Washington, which we were hoping one of them would last this winter, but it did not. So we had emergency replacement of one of them and that got installed in the last two weeks and is up and running. So we'll be bidding for nine boilers to be done this summer. And the last item was, we did have an election beginning November, and there were board members on that election. There wasn't a contest, so I'll just read the, the board member in the votes was Regina Borelli, 2,750 votes. I think this is still unofficial though, but Victoria Torbic, 3,243, and Haley Traverso, 3,910. And that concludes my report.
Congratulations to our board members again. I'm so happy that you're with us still. Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on to the presentation now? We're gonna stay here? Okay.
How's that? Okay. So, welcome to our community members who came today, our families. So what we started doing was, in the past, our high school hosted a Falcon of the Week, and our middle school does it as well. And it kinda just grew a little stagnant, and we decided to switch things up and instead host exemplary Falcons at our Board of Education meetings where we can share all our great students with our members of our board and our entire community. So what I'm going to do is, what I, what I did do was, I sent out, so we, we send out a form to our staff to kinda nominate students to be exemplary Falcons. So they nominate somebody, and then I send out a form, a document, to all of the staff across the district so that, that way they can share things that they're proud of for each of the students. So that's what I'm going to do, is read, read what all of the staff shared about each student, and then I'm going to call the student up. We have a Falcon of the Week shirt because we, we had a whole box, so we're going to use them all. And then we will take a photo, and then at the end, we'll take a photo of everybody, and then we will have a short five-minute break for everybody to kinda recess. Okay. I'm going to start with Ashley Acero. Ashley is the second on my senior roster, but she is often the first for everything else. The first to send in a brag sheet, to request a meeting, to apply to college, and to ask for a pep talk. She frequently emails me for help or stops by my office. In addition to being extremely driven, Ashley is also not afraid to ask for questions or help. Of all my seniors, I can honestly say she is the most on it. I believe her strong sense of self, coupled with her vision and ambition, makes her worthy of this nomination, and thus, she should be considered. I taught, now, these are different staff members, by the way. I taught Ashley her freshman year in Saddle Brook. Ashley is a hard worker. She is patient and caring. Ashley is the type of person everyone wants to be on their team. She considers others' thoughts, but she is not afraid to share her own ideas. Ashley is currently in my AP Spanish class. She is diligent, organized, and always giving 100% in class. She participates well and is a great, a great classmate. I had the pleasure of teaching math to Ashley as a 3rd grader. Even back then, she was an amazing person. Ashley was always focused and greeted you every day with a bright smile and a great attitude. I am so glad to hear that she's receiving this honor. I taught Ashley in 5th grade, and even as a young Falcon, she was always a bright light. She was dependable, hardworking, friendly, and full of positivity. I am so proud of her and happy to hear she is soaring. So Ashley Acero, please come on down. Perfect. Next up is Deanna. Deanna, pronounce your last name for me. Thank you. Terbitas, Deanna, Deanna Terbitas. Okay. Deanna is an extremely motivated, kind, and caring student. Her ability to lead comes quite naturally. Deanna attended HOBE during the summer into her junior year. She made such an impression with her leadership abilities that they invited her to act as a HOBE junior staff person this past summer. Deanna also has a passion for learning and is fascinated by people. While grades matter to Deanna, her focus is on learning something new. She goes over and beyond in her educational endeavors. Deanna is a positive, a positive person whose drive and excitement for life is infectious. I had the privilege of teaching Deanna when she was in 4th grade. Her recent recognition as an exemplary Falcon does not surprise me in the least, as she has consistently demonstrated strong leadership qualities. Deanna is a dedicated hard worker and a loyal friend who strives tirelessly to achieve her goals. I have had the pleasure of witnessing her growth over the years, even being included in her SW16. I am incredibly proud of Deanna and all that she has achieved. She continues to impress me with her unwavering determination and her ability to excel. I have no doubt that Deanna will continue to do amazing things, and I look forward to seeing her future successes. I got to know Deanna when she was in 6th grade. She always had a positive attitude and put forth effort in all she did. I don't think I ever saw her without a smile. She was a dedicated student who is focused on what needed to be done. So happy she's been, being recognized as an exemplary student. It is well deserved. Miss Terbitas would be the student that I would pick to lead a mock trial team in my English 10 class. In fact, one anecdote is emblematic of Deanna. While reading the crucible, the mock trial teams compete with each other. Although her team had wrapped up their trial, when the lead attorney was absent at a critical time in the opponent's presentation, Deanna stepped up and volunteered to pinch-hit with a moment's notice. Allowing? Allowing everyone who is present and prepared to go on. This is the very type of thing that has earned her the respect of not just her teachers, but her peers. Congratulations. Come on down. Clara is an absolute role model. I have had the pleasure of teaching her twice in high school. Her work ethic is unmatched, and she is extremely insightful and creative. Most importantly, she is an amazing human being. She is not only respectful, but she is extraordinarily kind and caring to everyone she encounters. As her teacher, I was truly blessed to have the opportunity to teach her and get to know what a wonderful person she is. It is difficult not to smile when she is in your presence. Clara is very determined in her passions. Clara pursues higher level of thinking classes through honor and AP courses at Saddle Brook High School, but is also taking courses at Bergen Community College to prepare for her college career. She is very bright and enjoys learning new material every day. If she has questions, she is not afraid to ask either in class or after school, but make sure to express her gratitude. Clara works very hard to improve when she encounters something she finds difficult. She asks questions, and she has been very involved within the school community as a player on the girls varsity soccer team, founder of the chess club, and members of multiple honor societies. Meanwhile, outside of school, Clara has held two steady jobs. She is a driven worker and takes advantage of opportunities when offered. Clara is intrinsically motivated. She is always seeking to challenge herself. Clara is also a kind and caring student who can always be counted on to lead by example and with grace. Clara is a genuine and dedicated student athlete who leads with integrity and respect. She is both motivated and disciplined, and her effective communication matched with her energy and work ethic has created one driven leader. I had the pleasure of having Clara in 5th grade and am so happy to hear of her accomplishments. She has always been self-driven, responsible, and determined to get the job done, all with a smile and a positive attitude. Congratulations Clara. Come on down. I have known Susanna for just about two months, and I am already extremely impressed with her character and work ethic. Her energy and enthusiasm make any classroom a fun learning environment. She is extremely creative and has a passion for learning. My day is not complete if she is not in my classroom. She always leads with her respect foot-first. She is always willing to help anyone. Her smile is so bright, we do not need to put the hallway lights on. Her energy is infectious, the ultimate Falcon. Boobianco, as I called her at LMS, was the kind of student that was always willing to help out others without any hesitation. She was constantly ready to help not only students, but if I needed help as well. I can honestly say that I never saw her angry or upset, always with a smile on her face. What a great student. She has a million-dollar smile and kindness to match. I was lucky to have her as a student. Suzie is truly a player for team success with her attitude and mindset. She always embraces challenges and strives for continuous improvement. Suzie is a responsible student athlete who is an effective role model with passion, work ethic, and communication. Suzie is such a bright light in the Saddle Brook community. Her smile lights up a room. She radiates positivity, you can smile, and respect. She is a dedicated student. She is genuine, empathetic, and kind to all she encounters. Susanna is an exemplary role model to all around her. She works hard at everything and it shows. Her sweet disposition makes her a friend to all. Suzie recently voted in by her peers to be president for the class of 2026, earned the only public speaking award last year, because not only was she a fabulous presenter, but she knew how to be a good audience member. Whenever I had someone who was nervous to present, I would tell them to find Suzie in the audience. Many students told me that her reassuring smile, eye contact, and head nods would give them the courage to go on. When it was her turn to speak in the auditorium with a mic and slides in front of a large audience, Suzie shared an inspirational and personal story that brought the house down. Young men and women alike were literally, all in caps, brought to tears. Yes, her story was good, but it was the courage and her delivery that connected with the audience. Congratulations, Suzie. Come on down. Congratulations. Julia Corcoran. The ultimate role model. Kind, compassionate, respectful, hardworking, and a supportive classmate. I would be neglectful if I did not include this story. I had a student teacher last year who was struggling early with the delivery of her lessons and being nervous in front of the class. One day, one of the lessons didn't go so well because the student teacher was extremely nervous. Julia approached the student teacher at the end of the lesson and reassured her that she did a great job and that she learned a lot. While the student teacher was still visibly upset, Julia gave her a hug. I was absolutely blown away by her sense of compassion and understanding. I've been teaching for over 25 years, and that was by far one of the greatest moments I witnessed in my teaching career. Julia's been a model student all around. She was the Board of Ed Rep last year. She does the pledge morning announcements and is someone that we can call on regularly when we need a student to represent the high school. Julia is a kind, compassionate, and accepting to all of her peers. She is a leader and a positive role model and a friend to others. At LMS, Julia helped bring an author/activist model, author slash activist slash model to our school. Her dedication to a cause is impressive. That is just one example of her amazing potential. Julia is an exceptional role model. She gives it her all, no matter what she is doing. She has a love and a care for the earth and the environment around us. She cares for the well-being of others. In our high school public speaking elective, Julia excelled, not just because she is articulate and presents well, Julia prepares. Last spring, Julia applied for a sports broadcasting internship with the minor league baseball team. She got the job, but what impressed me was how much she prepared. We had already completed a mock interview unit in class, but Julia came every day at lunchtime for a week to practice for the upcoming interview. She prodded me to ask her tough questions. She researched the company, and not surprisingly, she got the job. Congratulations, Julia. Aida transferred in at the beginning of 10th grade and has shown more school pride than some Saddle Brook lifers. She's actively involved in all aspects of school life and most recently worked in the office during the summer. She's a student that we call on regularly to represent the school, whether it's to give tours or help out at parent events. Aida is a positive force within the school. She is always looking for a way to make the school better and takes advantage of every opportunity available. Aida is such a positive young woman, always with a smile on her face. She works hard, asks questions, and helps others in need. She shows real school spirit and pride in her school. Aida was my tomorrow's teacher for a brief time at the beginning of this year. She was warm and caring. She showed up and jumped in without hesitation. I wish I could have had her for the entire year. She connected with her students, and no matter if she is with us or not, she is always part of our class family. Congratulations, Aida. Come on down. Okay, so I actually did not prepare anything to say, but I do just wanna comment on each of these students because I did, I have gotten to know them. So Ashley and Clara, I knew from Franklin School. I feel like I've watched them grow. I am very proud of both of you, and I'm not surprised at all to see you being honored as an exemplary Falcon. So congratulations. I know Deanna, I got to know you when you were working with Mr. Maish and Aida over the summer. I know that, when, you know, when, when the students work over the summer, they hear a lot of our banter back and forth, so I know that, I know that that happened. And Julia, over last school year, especially- And Julia, over last school year especially with Board of Ed representative, I'm just so proud to be your superintendent and be able to honor you today. So at this time, I gave you all size smalls. I do have some mediums here, just in case you want a medium. I am going to ask you all to come up so I can take a group picture, and then we will break for five, actually, we can break for five minutes? Is that okay? We'll make a motion to break now?
I have a motion to recess.
Second.
All accepted?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion to reconvene the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to begin with our meeting. Okay, so can I get a motion to open the meeting for public agenda items and policies only?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would anyone from the community like to speak for agenda items only and policies? Okay, can I have a motion to close the meeting to the public?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, all right, so we're going to start with board action items. We have P, I'm sorry, B, 2425 dot 17 through B, 2424 dot 19. Can I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone have a question or a discussion before?
Yes, question. On B2425 dot 19, was that discussed Monday?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm probably going to abstain from that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Okay, let's do roll call, Mr. Corradi.
Mr. Laurentino.
Yes.
Ms. Roloff.
Yes.
Ms. Torbic.
Yes.
Ms. Traverso.
Yes.
Ms. Attorelli.
Yes.
Ms. Raccamondo.
Yes to all except for B242519, I'm going to abstain from that.
Ms. Boralli.
Yes.
Mr. Ochello.
Yes.
Ms. Zainella.
Yes. Okay, education and curriculum. Ms. Traverso.
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. E2425 dot 24 through E2425 dot 34.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions?
I'll share the Point 2 for field trip request. We have, I'll just highlight some, our music department going taking overnight to Boston, Massachusetts every couple of years. They will do a bigger trip to participate in a music festival. We have our glamour gals clubs, a lot of our clubs at the middle school, high school are glamour gals clubs, our special ed classrooms, Lifetown, they have a title grant this year or for title schools, we're able to visit Lifetown at no cost. So that's on here. Those are some of the bigger ones. And then Point 25 is a course proposal for advanced algebra and financial applications. That course proposal is for a third-year math course for students that may be struggling in math, but they still want a third-year math to have on their transcript. Then Point 26 is our program of studies that's being approved for next school year already. That's all the classes that we offer at our high school, and that's because our scheduling process is going to be starting soon for our high school students for next school year. We have the spring musical that's scheduled from March 14th to 16th this coming spring, that's Point 27. And then we have a couple of delayed openings, and that's for testing. So one of our district goals is to increase our student performance academically on the state testing. So one of the ways that, this is one of the strategies that we're using, is to really focus, have the entire building be focused on the testing. And instead of having testing being dragged on throughout the entire testing window, which is typically a month and a week or a month and two weeks, because we are now a one-to-one district, we're able to test within one full week. And that way, we have one week of testing, three ELA, two math, and we're able to get it done, so it's not dragging on for an entire month and a week. So those delayed openings would be for students that are not testing in the buildings. So at the elementary schools, that would be students in grades K to 2. They would have a delayed opening while all the other students that are testing would come at regular time. And same thing for middle school, high school. So the students that are not testing would have that delayed opening, and then that enables us to have the recommended to staff personnel in each testing classroom environment and to really make sure that we are fully focused and doing our best on the test. And then the Point 34 is another, oh, Point 33 or the ESY dates, those are being approved for next school year. Staff report June 25th. And then the program will run from June 30th until July 31st. So essentially the month of July, including June 30th and not on Fridays, Monday through Thursday. So that's for the ESY program this coming summer. And then Point 34 is another course proposal. It's an elective for next school year. It's Architecture and CAD, which is computer aided design. And it's our 21st century courses here at the high school, the electives are very well represented and light by our student population, so this is another elective for them to choose from.
Okay, a quick question on that. Just to clarify, so the students in that one week of testing, if you have to do makeup testing, that won't affect?
No, correct.
Okay, good.
We have personnel, enough personnel.
Okay, all right. Very good. All right, any other questions? All right, roll call please, Mr. Corradi.
Mr. Laurentino.
Yes.
Ms. Roloff.
Yes.
Ms. Torbic.
Okay, yes, but for E2425 point 24 on the field trips, I need to abstain from number 68, number 72 through 76, and number 81.
Okay, Ms. Traverso.
Yes.
Ms. Attorelli.
Yes.
Ms. Raccamondo.
Yes.
Ms. Boralli.
Yes.
Mr. Ochello.
Yes.
Ms. Zainella.
Yes.
Okay, budget and finance, Mr. Raccamondo?
Sure. At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. BF245 dot 33 to BF2425 dot 40.
Can I have a second? Okay, any questions or discussion?
I'll share some of the professional development. I want to just, you know, remind everybody that one of our goals that I just said was to increase our student academic performance. With that comes our New Jersey Tiered System of Supports model that we utilize across the district. So for the board, for those of you that are not in education, so what that means is we have three tiers, and they always use a triangle. So the tier one is at the bottom, and those are the supports that every single student receives across our district. Those are tier one supports. Tier two would be a little bit less in the middle of the triangle, and those are some students, those are the students that may receive a little bit more, something a little bit extra, like a basic skills class or an extra small group reading section, something to that effect, just a little bit extra, a little bit of more support. And then at the top of the triangle, that would be tier three, and those are our students that receive a little bit more intensive supports, such as maybe one-on-one or two-on-one reading instruction or math instruction, maybe four days a week as opposed to where tier two would have it two days a week. So something to that effect. So with that said, in the professional development, you'll see there's some, some of our staff are attending a session called Supporting Our Students Through Tier One Interventions and some iron arrest ones that the county is hosting. So our iron arrest meetings, that's where we meet as a team in each building along with the parents of the student, and we create an action plan. And we develop a goal for that student, and then we have some interventions on that action plan for our staff and our parents to complete, and we progress monitor that. So every six to eight weeks, we'll meet again and we'll see how those interventions are going, if they need to be revised, and how we're doing. So continuing with that initiative and really providing supports to all of our students, those are some of the professional development sessions that you'll see we're sending our staff to. Or in Gillingham, we're sending a bunch of our staff to that morphology plus program. Some of those were approved last time. We have one or two on this one. Tech Expo, which is a convention, PE Jam, and Music Teacher Professional Development Day. So we have a lot of our teachers that are starting to really collaborate with their peers and colleagues in order to develop, you know, in order to kind of expand their array of instructional strategies and activities. So we thank them for that.
Okay, quick question on that. So the Orton-Gillingham, will that be turnkey to the other?
No, that's when they receive their certificate. So it's a week long, it's the intensive.
Okay, it's the intensive, all right. And how many of our other staff members have that?
I would have to check. We have a handful right now across the district that have it, but we're also sending most of our, I believe most of our special education teachers, we're sending to this one.
Okay, that's good. All right, glad to hear that. Any other questions? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Laurentino.
I'm going to vote yes to all, but under BF2425 dot 33, I'm going to abstain from checks 5578 and 5950. And then under BF2425 dot 36, I'm going to abstain from numbers 42, 48, and 53.
Ms. Roloff.
Yes to all, but I'm going to abstain from BF2425 dot 33, check number 66 point 69.
Ms. Torbic.
Yes to all, but under BF2425 point 33, I'll abstain from check number 66192.
Ms. Traverso.
Yes to all, but with regards to BF2425 dot 33, I will abstain from 66, check number, sorry, 66149.
Ms. Attorelli.
Yes to all, except under BF2425 dot 33, I'm abstaining from check number 66187.
Ms. Raccamondo.
Yes.
Ms. Boralli.
Yes to all, but I am abstaining from BF2425 point 33, check number 66178.
Mr. Ochello.
Yes to all, except BF2425 dot 33, I'm abstaining from check number 66168.
And Ms. Zainella.
Yes all, but I'm going to abstain in BF2425 dot 33, check number 66163, check number 66164, check number 5500, and check number 5867.
We know who's buying drinks.
Everybody get that. Wait, wait, I still have another one. Not in checks, sorry. And then in BF2425 dot 36, I'm going to abstain from item numbers 53 and 58. Yes to everything else. What's left? There's a lot of other numbers.
Well, checks passed there in case somebody was keeping track of the numbers. They're just for various reimbursements, they're not bonuses to the Board of Education.
Okay, let's go to facilities and operations, Ms. Torbic.
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following item, F2425 point 4.
Can I have a second?
Thank you.
I had a lot there to talk about.
Any questions or discussion on the report?
It's linked. Thanks for the link.
Thank you.
No, we're good? Okay. Did you have a question? Okay.
No, I just want fresh.
Okay, all right, let's do roll call.
Mr. Laurentino.
Yes.
Ms. Roloff.
Yes.
Ms. Torbic.
Yes.
Ms. Traverso.
Yes.
Ms. Attorelli.
Yes.
Ms. Raccamondo.
Yes.
Ms. Boralli.
Yes.
Mr. Ochello.
Yes.
Ms. Zainella.
Yes. Okay, negotiations, we have an amendment there, right?
Yeah, so that motion, we're going to withdraw and move it to December. I don't have the document yet.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, all right, so then we're going to move on, thank you, to personnel. Mr. Laurentino.
At the recommendation of superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items, P2425 dot 29 through P2425 dot 36.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Sorry. Any questions, discussions?
2425 point 29, Ms. Julia Lee, we wish her the very best in her future endeavors. She is one of our school psychologists. She is resigning at this time. And then also 2425 point 31, we have, number one is the Spanish teacher at our fourth high school, so high school Spanish teacher. Number two is a paraprofessional. Number three is a guidance secretary position to take the place of Joyce Byrne because Joyce Byrne is moving over to the executive assistant to the superintendent position. Friday is Gina Galvin's last day in our district, and Joyce Byrne will be starting on Monday. And hold on, I'm not done yet. 2425 point 32, the stipends, you'll see some of the clubs that were approved. You'll see stipends for our staff to lead those clubs, and then you'll also see number nine is Howard Schuman returning as an assistant indoor track coach. Our track, there's a dedication plaque for him outside, he started here and he was at Academy of Holy Angels and now he's coming back to coach our students with Mr. Sekon coming full circle. Then we have, let's say, point three fours is one of our students that graduated last school year and he's coming back to do ten hours of observations for his educational program at, at his college here at our high school. Point three five is a Montclair State University student for a clinical internship in high school counseling. And then point three six is a Fairleigh Dickinson student for a preschool field observation experience. So we're excited to host all of these upcoming future educators in our district.
And if I may, on P two four two five dot three one, ID one and two, I need to still fill in the budget account number. I'll have that done by the time you get the minutes in December.
Any, the other discussion questions? Good? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Laurentino.
Yes.
Ms. Roloff.
Yes.
Ms. Torbic.
Yes.
Ms. Traverso.
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli.
Yes.
Ms. Raccamondo.
Yes.
Ms. Berali.
Yes.
Mr. Arcello.
Yes.
Ms. Ainella.
Yes all, but in P two four two five dot three two, I'm going to abstain from item number two and nine. Yes to everything else.
Okay.
Okay, now we're going to move on to committee reports. Budget and finance, Mr. Raccamondo.
Unless, I was not here for that.
Yeah, I know.
Unless Mike has it or...
I could just review it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms., I know your name's on here, but I know Mr. Raccamondo unfortunately couldn't come. Do you? Do you want, go ahead, try winging it.
Yeah, the budget and finance was an excellent meeting last week. We opened up preliminary discussions for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget and we look forward to future meetings where we will discuss more budget items. Thank you.
That was his first report, he did very good.
On the fly, nice.
Are we good with that? Okay. All right, um, facilities and operations. Okay.
Michael do it.
Yeah, I mean, pretty much the facility committee met on, what was it, October twenty ninth? And we reviewed the projects for, that were in the twenty four, twenty five budget, which all of them, most of them have been completed already. I talked about the boilers before, the referendum projects, and the items that were on the agenda like the maintenance plan and I think that's it. Yep.
Basically, we reviewed prior to coming out, discussing it with the public, what, he was informing the board, what was going on. So now, the, the community knows as well. Okay, uh, negotiations, we, do you have anything? Right, we have, okay. Policy.
Hi. Yep. We had a policy meeting on October twenty ninth. We looked at the student use of vehicles on the school grounds and we decided to keep it the same way. We discussed the district's plan to relocate the bike racks at the middle school, high school to another side, to the other side of the fence, because it's now on the outside by the parking lot. We will update our unmanned aircraft policy to permit drones during athletic events. We updated our petty cash policy and we deleted the community schools, so we increased the middle school, high school from a hundred to three hundred. We spoke about board committees and discussed how best to move forward with the different board committees. The unmanned aircraft and petty cash policy will be on the December's agenda for first reading.
Perfect, thank you so much. Okay, so let's move on to liaison reports. I'm going to start off, Ms. Adorelli, do you have anything for?
No, there was no meeting.
Why? There was no meeting, okay. Do you have, oh, I'm going to move on with the other reports first before we go to PTO, PTAs.
Okay.
Education, foundation? We do. Okay, hold on.
Okay, so, um, the education foundation has launched its Dave and Buster's fundraiser where you can buy your Dave and Buster's digital card. The more they sell, the more Dave and Buster's will donate. The link is on their Facebook page. And that's it.
Okay, very good. All right, Ms. Traverso. CPAC, do you have anything?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. All right, we do not have anything for township liaison meetings. All right, so we're going to move on to the PTO, PTA. I'm going to start back with Ms. Adorelli, with Franklin School?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Franklin School had their PTO meeting last night, several things were discussed. The upcoming events were including today's prismatic laser show, Kindness Quest. It was in honor of National Kindness Day and the PTO sponsored, that the PTO sponsored for all Franklin students. They celebrated the success of the Halloween Spooktacular, which had over a hundred students in attendance and noted that two recent snack sales on ten four and eleven eleven were very successful. Planning is also underway for the holiday shop, and this sounds pretty cool, and the Polar Express event where they're hoping to be able to decorate a school bus and then take the students on a tour of the holiday lights for the town. Additionally, they're in the process of using scholastic dollars earned from the last book sale to purchase items for each homeroom teacher. The Franklin PTO is also purchasing adaptive music recorders for students with dexterity challenges. And that concludes their report.
That's a great report. Okay. That was a good report. Um, Smith School, Mr. Raccamondo, do you have?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you to all of the students and families who participated in the Read-a-thon. Students were at a total of forty seven thousand one hundred and fourteen minutes and raised over ten thousand dollars. They have added holiday shirts to their spirit wear, spirit wear. You can find that link on Smith School's website to order. Original works, work orders are due Monday, November eighteenth. Items will be delivered to the school before the holiday break. Our next restaurant night is scheduled at Bubacoo's on Thursday, November twenty first. Save the date for breakfast with Santa. We will host our event on Saturday, December fourteenth at the Applebee's in Garfield. Their next PTO meeting is on Tuesday, November nineteenth at seven PM on Zoom and happy Thanksgiving, they says.
Oh, that was very nice. Okay, uh, Long School, Ms. Traverso, do you have one?
Yes. Long School had their meeting last night as well. And at the same, right before that, sorry, the sixth grade committee also met there. The sixth grade does various things throughout the year to help offset their costs for some of the end of the year events for that grade. They are doing, they are hosting snack sales on half days and will be continuing to do so throughout the school year. There is, they are also hosting a Santa breakfast at the Paramus Applebee's for LMS families on Sunday, December first. Tickets are ten dollars per person. LMS families are asked to register via the Google form found on the LMS PTO website. All other additional information for sixth grade fundraisers can be found on the same website. Previous programs, Picture Day took place on Monday, October twenty first. Personally, I'm aware that they came in this week, retakes are still being determined, retake dates are being determined. Their annual trunk or treat event for LMS families took place on Friday, October twenty fifth. A big thank you goes out to chairperson Gianni Luciano for his planning, organization, leadership, and attention to detail. Thank you to all the families who decorated a trunk. Halloween class parties took place on Thursday, October thirty first after the Halloween parade. PTO provided pizza for all students and staff. Class parents provided additional treats, gifts, and entertainment. Yesterday, the LMS PTO held a dine to donate fundraiser at two of the Quobas locations. Twenty-five percent of purchases are being donated back to the PTO. Thank you to all the families that participated. Their spirit sales continue, please visit the website in order to order, there are many new designs on the website. David's Cookies and Cheesecake fundraiser orders will be delivered on November twenty second. Holiday Workshop will take place on December third, fourth, and fifth. Students will have an opportunity to shop for their friends and family. Holiday class parties will take place on Friday, December twentieth, which is our half day prior to break. The PTO will provide pizza for all students and staff. Class parents will provide the additional treats, gifts, and entertainment. As a friendly reminder, LMS PTO members can join our Facebook page. All LMS families and staff are encouraged to visit our website, which is kept up to date with all upcoming events, fundraisers, meetings, et cetera. As a note here, and they'd send a special thank you out to myself for attending and helping out at the Fall Book Fair for Scholastic, um, attending the Heroes for Heroes and helping out there, I'm going to throw that back at LMS because without our staff, principal, Ms. Mansfield, parents, volunteers, and our PTO board, none of this would happen without you. So thank you, and thank you all for being here tonight. LMS PTO would like to take a moment to thank anybody who has supported fundraisers and events. Special extra thanks to all our volunteers and a happy Thanksgiving to all.
Very nicely put. I will have to, I would like to say that I think it's really nice how much the PTO and the PTAs are doing in the elementary level. It's, it's really outstanding and it's very much appreciated, so I want to extend my thank you to them. Okay, we're going to continue. I have nothing for the middle school, high school, PTO. And we have nothing for Washington. Okay, so then we're going to move on to correspondence. Do we have any?
None.
None, okay. All right, it's old business. Anything for old business? No?
I just have one item.
Okay.
So I, I did not put on the, I mentioned the boiler before, Washington School, you were all emailed the, the cost and everything. I do need to put that on the agenda, I mean, it was, it's done anyway, we had it, it was emergency. Contacted the county office, the auditors, attorney, so, the seminar, I'll just put the action on just so it satisfies the auditors that it, they made it there.
Thank you.
Okay.
You vote no, I'll repeat.
We're going to vote no. All right, new business?
Through the chair, I have two things.
Okay.
At what point would a class be split? At what is the maximum students?
There's a policy, let me, I, I don't want to misspeak.
Okay.
Can I get back to you on that? I need to...
Absolutely.
We have a policy for that.
And the second thing is, I don't remember this, I was there, but I'm not going to debate it. Is there a change to the kindergarten program for graduation? Because people are saying they didn't call names, they did, one school didn't, another didn't, and moving forward, they're not going to be calling their names?
That I have not heard. Each school does do it a little differently. Someone did stop me the other day to ask me if we were getting rid of kindergarten celebrations.
Exactly.
But we are, we are not. I think that maybe there was some confusion because it was always called a graduation. We kind of moved away from graduation because they're not moving to a different building, they're just moving down the hall. But we are not getting, we're not getting rid of kindergarten celebrations. I don't know what they're going to look like next year. I, I've not been part of that conversation, but I have not heard, each school has always done it differently. So it's never been the same at each of the three schools.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Through the chair.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it's just me, but Devin here has a, an awesome, um, voice for like radio or something, I don't know. But, good job. And as far as the teachers showing up for the students, that's great, thank you. Also, there was a car show a couple of weeks ago that the Saddle Brook Angels did and I just wanted to say, it was awesome, it was great, so, um, and there's a, I don't know if you guys know about Long School on, on, what's the name of that? Floral. There's an awesome Dominican little restaurant over there. I don't know if you've been there yet, but you got to try it.
Oh, is it new? Did it just open up recently?
And they're from Saddle Brook. The family that owns it's from Saddle Brook.
But it opens up recently?
Yeah, the food is excellent.
Gelato.
They got a secret menu too, so.
The food is really good.
Thank you.
There you go, there's a new place.
Let me zip it.
Okay.
One other thing, just happy Thanksgiving to everyone out there.
I do want to add one other thing, if I may. I want to say congratulations to Coach D for Coach of the Year. This would be, I believe, her fourth time. So she is an outstanding person, she's an outstanding coach.